Okay, good evening. It is 7:03. We are starting the meeting of the Altadena Town Council on August 15th. The time is 7:03. Meeting is open. Okay, the first item on our agenda is our flag salute. We have Boy Scout Troop One, which includes girls. So it's not just Boy Scout Troop. So we're going to have Victoria introduce them.
I wanted to introduce Troop One, Altadena. As the chair said, they are now rebranded as Scouts. So these are not Boy Scouts. These are Scouts that include both girls and boys. This troop was established in 1914 and is one of the oldest troops in the San Gabriel Valley. On Saturday, five of the Scouts from this troop were honored to have earned their Eagle Scout Award. Thank you. Tonight, we will have a presentation of colors in addition to the pledge. And we have Scout Bradley Boatman, Scout John Burgess, Scout Luca Chivonato, Vincent Viscara, and Subi Kiara Solis. So if you want to come forward, the floor is yours.
Please stand for the presentation of colors. And then... Honor Patrol, advance. Honor Patrol, halt. Honor Patrol, cross the colors. Honor Patrol, present the colors. Scout salute, guests please honor the flag and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. Honor Patrol, post the colors. Honor Patrol, dismissed. Thank you. You may be seated.
Oh goodness. Okay, I want to thank, I want to thank the Scout Troop One. And I want to thank you for inviting me to the amazing ceremony on Saturday. It was heartwarming. I mean, I actually had tears in my eyes. It was amazing to see those five young men and their families. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the roll call. Councilmember Wong.
Thank you Chair Jones. Starting out with Census Track 4601, Victoria Knapp.
Present.
Connor Cipola.
Present.
Thank you. 4602, Billy Malone.
Excused.
Nick Arndsen.
Present.
460301, Dorothy Wong is here. Melissa Melrona.
Present.
460302, Dr. Sandra Thomas.
Excused.
Chris O'Malley.
Present.
4610, Veronica Jones.
Here.
Rod Bryce.
Excused.
4611, Pat Sutherland.
Here.
Alan Peck. Thank you. 4612, Reginald Wilkins. Doug Cauliflower.
He's running late.
4613, Sylvia Vega.
Excused.
And Diane Markison.
Here.
Who is taking tally there?
Three, we have a quorum.
We have a quorum.
Yeah, we have a quorum. There's three.
Thank you Chair Jones.
Excused. Okay. All right, we'll move right along to our vice, to approval of our today's agenda.
Good evening, fellow council members and community members, both here and watching online. There are agendas at the back of the room, on the table, as well as public comment cards. The council welcomes input from the community on both agendized and non-agendized items. If you would like to make public comment, please fill out the card and give it to a councilperson on either end of the dais. While the council does not respond to public comment during the meeting, if you would like a response, please include your contact information. This process is in place to ensure that everyone wishing to make public comment has the time to do so and that we can conduct this meeting in an orderly fashion. Councilmembers, the Town Council Executive Committee met on Tuesday, August 8th, to set the agenda for tonight's meeting. The agenda was circulated to you on Saturday, the 12th. I have one change. Please move cert to Section 3, Item 3.4. Are there any other changes? Councilmember Sutherland.
Item 5.4, there is nothing to report for ACAB.
Okay, so we will strike ACAB. So that leaves community reports with the three reports. Any other changes? Hearing none, I move, we accept the agenda as amended.
All those in favor? All those? Any opposition, any opposing? The agenda is accepted with those changes. Thank you. So we're moving right on to our officers' report. And the first report is the chairman's report, and that's me, my report, Veronica, here. So, got to make sure I'm here. But I just want to say, just, I'm going to give some information on our election. But before I do that, I just want to say, I had an amazing experience this week working as a team with fellow council members, the county, and the city of Pasadena. I had a resident in my census tract who didn't have water for a month. Can you imagine a month she hadn't had water in her home? She has, she was raised in this house. It's the third generation in the home. And there was, it's a long story, but just to make it short, the father's name was the same as the son's name. The son passed away. The city of Pasadena got notice that the father had passed away when it was actually the son. And even though the house had been placed in the siblings' names, the city didn't have that information. And the family, I would call, they needed help. They didn't know how to maneuver the system. So when she came to my house a week and a half ago, she says we hadn't had water in a week and a half. But I'll just tell you how amazing it was. I got on the phone, I called Doug Cauliflower. I said, can you give me the information on this home? I need to know who owns it. Within five minutes, I had that information. I called someone in the city of Pasadena and I said, this is an emergency and I need your help. And immediately, I got a response that this is what the city's story was. And I told him what the real story was, that the father had not passed away, that he was 90 years old and he lived in Texas. And the home belonged to the siblings. Well, just to tell you, because of the partnership and the relationship, that family has water. So it was just heartwarming and it was hurtful for me to know that every day, as hot as it was, I mean, I can live without food, but I can't live without water. So not to have water. And there was an eight-year-old in the house. So just to tell you that, people will say the town council doesn't do anything or they don't do enough, or they don't have any power. We have power and we can do things when we work together as a community. And the community came together to make sure this family had water. So I just wanted to tell that story, okay? Oh, okay, so yeah, I just made a correction. I don't have to tell you the election information until later. But I just wanted to say, the town council is very important to our community because she felt comfortable enough to come to me. The reason it took a month is because they're very private and they didn't want anybody to know that they didn't have water and they were trying to solve it on their own. So we are very important, all of us, here, in our entire community. When we work together, we get things done. And thank you, Suzie. Suzie helped me through it. So it was an amazing experience, not always a happy one, but it was a good one. So, thank you, that's my report. Okay, so we're going to move on to the vice chair's report.
Thank you Chair Jones. I wanted to take a moment to welcome all POSD administrators, staff, and students back to school for the 2023-2024 school year, which got underway yesterday. And I wanted to urge all of us who travel across Altadena, near Mary W. Jackson Elementary School, near Altadena Arts, near Elliott Arts, to please slow down and be cautious of pedestrians. Pay attention to the direction of crossing guards as we look to protect student safety to and from school. And be mindful of no parking signs. Those signs are in place so that the car line for the schools can progress without impact to the students. I also wanted to bring awareness to the new mural that went up at Altadena Arts Magnet on El Molino. It resurfaced, a retaining wall around their playground. And it's quite vibrant and bright and beautiful. And to also shout out to Elliott Arts, their arts conservatory, which allows students to participate in arts enrichment classes in all of the arts disciplines after, discipline after school, started yesterday. It's the first of its kind in POSD. And it's the beginning of what we hope will be a conservatory that will take them through high school, so that we do not lose students to Laxa and to CS Arts and Dordy. So, welcome back, everybody.
Victoria, can I add Webster Elementary to the list of schools?
Yes, you can. And I was thinking about Webster and then I lost it. And Webster is on Washington. And again, we just need to be mindful, when we've gone an entire summer without children running around in crosswalks and walking to school and riding bikes and taking scooters, we forget. So just be mindful of all of our children. We do not, we had children hit last year. And I can tell you that you do not want to be the person that hits a child.
Okay, so we're moving right along. Now we have 2.3 Recording Secretary, Nick Arndsen.
Thank you Chair. The minutes from the July 18th Town Council meeting were sent out to full council. Last week, I did receive one correction from Councilmember Sutherland. And I made that correction, it was just a slight change to your ACAB report. Are there any more corrections this evening? Seeing none. Chair Jones, I move that we accept the minutes with the one change by unanimous consent.
So moved. If there's no objections, I move, no objections. So, okay, they're moved. Okay. So moved.
They're accepted.
They're accepted. Let's move on. Okay, 2.4 Treasurers' Report.
Is there anybody here tonight that was not at the meeting last month? She should have abstained. So you needed to go through the whole...
I'll make, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we accept the minutes with the change as noted from Councilmember Sutherland. And then we'll do a vote. Okay. So I'm looking for a second.
Okay, second? Not yet?
Anybody?
Okay. Okay, Connor's second, okay. Abstention? Okay, we have two abstentions. Okay, so they move forward now as we just did it. Thank you. Okay, so let's move on to the Treasurers' Report.
Thank you Madam Chair. We began the statement from July 1st through July 31st with $2,184.75 in the bank. We had $74.25 worth of deposits. We had a $100 withdrawal for the ACAB, ACAB, celebration contribution from the Town Council. That left us with a grand total of $2,159 in our account. I'd like to remind everybody that the Altadena Town Council does not raise taxes. We are a volunteer organization that depends on the goodwill of our neighbors to support our, our good work here. So if you would be so kind and drop a dollar or a quarter, no amount is too little. And whoever has it at the end, if you could just give it back to Reggie here, that would be great. I had a, there it is. And if you are watching online and you'd like to donate, feel free to email me at chris.O'Malley@altedinatowncouncil.org.
Okay, we're moving on to 2.5, our corresponding secretary's report. Councilmember Wong.
Thank you Chair Jones. I, I hope that you will all take just a moment in time. I have been deeply moved with wildfire, which I'm sure we're going to talk about. Here in Altadena, it hits home hard, not only living here in Altadena, reminding me of the Co'olau Mountains are the San Gabriels. And so, let's stay hopeful and strong at this meeting dedicated for the island of Maui and Lahaina. So I know I always get really emotional when I talk about these things and take up the meeting time, but I just, Deb will give a little bit of a plug for the American Red Cross. There can be places that we put on our website that people can donate. Because I was watching the news story and it reminded me so much of the resilience that Altadena has in the people of Altadena. We'll find that bear in that trash can, you know, whatever it is. We're really resilient people. And it really reminded me of that and also, at the same time, our vulnerability. So we have lots of work to do. Maui Strong, and I'll put some information on the website, as well as the Humane Society for you animal lovers out there. Also, I'll be posting all of this great material. The links to, from LA County Public Works are BeBearWise and our new bear carts and all that great information on the website. I'll mention this when Maria does her fire reports, in case she doesn't say it. And then, two other things, the wonderful concerts in the park. We still have a couple left. August 19th, this Saturday, Las Chicas. August 26th, Saturday, the Jerry Rothschild Band. And September 9th, the WHO Experience. So thank you for all the people involved in Concerts in the Park. And then, just to clarify, just the farmers' markets that are here. So on Wednesdays, the Altadena Farmers Market is online at Pizza of Venice. And you can pick up from 3:30 to 6:00. And then, let's support our Altadena Neighborhood Market and all the great things going on there. The parking lot just got repaved, so that's really cool. And hopefully, we can all look to do some great events at Loma Alta Park, which also has amazing potential for resilience. So that's my long story. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. And just a side note, the Farmers Market is Fridays. The Altadena Community Farmers Market is now on Fridays, from 4:00 to 8:00, at Loma Alta Park. And it's pretty amazing, they have over 30 vendors. So, and another side note is that Rotary, if you go to the Rotary website, they have a link, right Doug, that you can give to Maui, that you can actually send money to Maui. Push the button.
I didn't know it was on the website, but I hope it is, because we do have a, we do have a fundraising campaign.
Okay, if it's not, could you get it there by the end of the meeting? Okay?
I'll get right on that, yeah, you got it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to our public safety reports. Can we have Altadena Sheriff's Station Captain Jabari Williams to the podium?
Good evening. So first, I'd like to start off with a few of our crime stats, like I normally do. Our aggravated assaults are up 6.9%. And our property crimes are down 9%. So for aggravated assaults, we had four noted incidents. Two were domestic violence where the suspects were identified. And one was a road rage incident. There is one aggravated assault I do want to make note of. There was a robbery at the mobile gas station on Woodbury and Fair Oaks. This was on a Sunday afternoon, 3 o'clock in the afternoon. Somebody was pumping gas. Somebody came up to them, a group of people came up and pointed a gun at them and robbed them at gunpoint. Took their money and some property. So I just mentioned that because even on a Sunday afternoon, broad daylight, it's important that we stay vigilant and just be careful of our surroundings. There's a, we're going to be putting together an operation at the station. And normally, when we put together operations, we don't announce it. However, I am going to announce this operation because it's dealing with our problems with parking. So, within the next two weeks, we're organizing this plan. And we're going to implement it to where we're going to set aside days and just go out and write parking tickets. And the reason why I want to announce this is because I want everybody to know in advance so that they can do something and not park illegally when they're not supposed to. Getting a parking ticket, it sucks, you know? I got one a couple of months ago and it was hard for me to just pay it, you know? So, I want the Town Council and anybody that's listening, if you can think of hotspots that you want us to pay attention to regarding parking issues, please let us know at the station. You can ask for Captain Williams or Lieutenant Battie. When you call the station, it's 626-798-1131. Ask for Captain Williams or Lieutenant Battie regarding parking issues. So that way, we can identify some of these, these hot, what we call hotspots and then we'll go out and deal with those places. Tomorrow, there's going to be a Business Watch Town Hall meeting here at the Community Center. Just want to make everybody aware of that. It'd be tomorrow at 12, between 12 and 1:00. And it's organized by the Altadena Chamber of Commerce. So, all businesses are welcome to come and hear strategies on how to protect your business. However, we're not going to just limit it to businesses. Anyone can come if they, if they so choose to do so. We are asking that people do RSVP for the Town Hall. They can do that by emailing office@altedinachamber.org. However, if you forget to RSVP, RSVP, still come, we won't turn you away. And other than that, I'd like to thank everybody for participating in the National Night Out. I was not here, but I hear it went along smoothly. And other than that, I have nothing else, and that's just questions.
Are there any questions for the captain? Pat?
It looks like our Census Track 4611 wins the prize for stolen cars last month.
Okay.
And they're sort of bunched at the lower part of the Census Track. And I don't know if there was, you know, are they just like, you know, a bunch of random ones or was something kind of going on?
I have to look at the synopsis for each one. I do have a breakdown for each stolen vehicle. But I'm going to venture to guess that it was just random. And this is just, this shows recovery and stolen, as you're referring to stolen, right?
Did you get your answer?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Good evening Captain. Well, the parking tickets include across from the mortuary, where there seems to be some larger vehicles parked, maybe more like motorhomes and things of...
That is number one on our list.
I figure, thank you.
Oh wow, good.
We will, we do run into some issues, like I had to explain to some people, when we do have these oversized vehicles, we cite them and we'll keep citing. There are some challenges with having them towed and finding tow yards that will store them. We're still trying to work that out. But if we write enough tickets, maybe that'll help.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yeah, there's an ordinance, right?
I'm sorry?
Large vehicle ordinance?
There is one in all in Altadena, yes.
Yes, okay, that you can use, okay.
Any more questions?
Concerning Charles Towns, any updates from the DOG investigation?
No updates that I'm aware of, none that was given to me.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you Captain. Okay, we move on to 3.2, California Highway Patrol. Officer Keller, Bay or Boyd? I only see one.
Good evening. I've been here in a while. Last time, the podium was over there. And I wore my blue tie to distinguish me from Officer Bay and Keller. I'm Officer Boyd. I have a few stats for July, given to me by Officer Bay and Officer Keller. For the month of July, there were a total of 19 incidences, including hit-and-run, DUI, and injury-related traffic collisions. There were three hit-and-runs, 11 just traffic collisions with no injuries. One traffic collision, which involved a DUI investigation, and four traffic collisions involving injuries. There were no pedestrian versus vehicle or bicyclist. Traffic crashes for the month of July, which is something we're proud of. And just to kind of highlight some, some events that occurred. National Night Out, as Captain Williams was saying, the Altadena Office partook in the Altadena National Night Out, the Burbank National Night Out, and the Chrysanthemum Valley National Night Out. We also will have a special enforcement geared toward pedestrian enforcement this Friday at the Altadena Elementary and Elliott Middle Schools. As you guys know, schools are starting, so we're going to ramp up our visual and citation enforcement regarding pedestrian safety, as I know that's just as important to you guys as it is for us. I believe Officer Bay had some interactions with Mrs. Wong regarding some talks about enforcement on Altadena Drive and Fair Oaks and Palm Street. So we'll, we look forward to collaborating on that as well. Other than that, I think that's, all that was relayed to me. So if you have any questions, I will pass that on to Officer Bay and Keller.
Are there any questions? Okay.
Welcome back. Concerning Edward Bronstein, there was a court date scheduled for July 25th. It was just expected to set a hearing date. It wasn't anybody in court. Do you have any news on that? Was the hearing date set?
I don't have any information on that.
Do you know how we might find out? Or should I reach out to anybody in particular?
I would contact our division office.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Dorothy Wong.
Hi. Two questions. One, by the way, both Odyssey Schools and Avison start tomorrow. So that'll be like 8:00 AM to 8:30. And the new crosswalk, Always Stop, will be activated with lots of cars. So definitely an area to watch or be, look for concern. And then, just a general question, because we've had a lot of hit-and-runs lately. Do you know if there's a percentage of how many hit-and-runs actually gets solved? Or is it, can you even answer that question? Because it's, I think, 15% of the collisions were hit-and-runs this month.
So the August stats aren't, you know, aren't in yet because we're still in August. I'm not sure up to this point where we're at in relation to the hit-and-runs. But as far as whether or not there's any follow-up regarding hit-and-runs, it just depends on whether or not there are, there's information to follow up on. Oftentimes, hit-and-runs involve the suspect leaving the scene without any, you know, follow-up that can be, that can be conducted. So it's kind of a case-by-case basis. If there are any witnesses, if the party involved was able to obtain a license plate, some type of description, it's all going to be relative.
Yeah, so we definitely had some leftover car parts from a couple of hit-and-runs that happened lately. So hopefully, something was solved there because residents lost their vehicles, you know? They were hit so hard that their vehicles were a total loss. So.
Unfortunately, we do investigate quite a bit of those type of collisions. And I can just advise, if you're involved in a hit-and-run, I mean, don't try to be a hero and follow. Do your best to be a good witness as far as getting a solid license plate where we can conduct some type of follow-up. If you can get a physical description of the vehicle, any unique identifiers of the vehicle, window tint stickers, damage, direction of travel, immediately dial 911 so that we can allocate resources there to see if there's, you know, immediate follow-up that we can do. But other than that, those are always tough situations.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Officer Boyd. Okay, we move right along to LA County Fire. Maria Grekken?
He is, yeah, he still is taller. Good evening, everyone. For the month of July, we had a total of 387 responses in Altadena. 301 of those were for medical calls, and we transported 216 patients. We had 14 service calls, four hazardous condition calls, which were all either power lines down or arcing wires at various locations. 59 good intent calls. We had nine fires this month, which is high for Altadena. One, two, three of them were trash fires. One was a fence fire on Mendocino. One on Figueroa Drive and El Sol Avenue was a small spot fire in the grass. We don't know how that started. We had a vehicle fire on Woodbury Road. And we had one brush fire, the Millard Incident, at Lake Avenue and Loma Alta on July 27th, which burned two acres entirely in the forest. So that was Angeles National Forest Fire, and we were assisting them. And we had two structure fires. On July 13th, on Sacramento Street, we had a structure fire that caused a total of $105,000 worth of damage. It was accidental. It was a faulty electrical outlet on the upstairs balcony. The occupants of the home were displaced, and we did issue a save card. Are you guys familiar with our save card program? Okay, save cards are, I forgot what it stands for. Not important. The important thing is, it's a $250 gift card that is presented to occupants when they're displaced because of a structure fire, so if they can no longer stay there, regardless of whether they request Red Cross assistance, some do, some don't. But this is something that the fire department does. We provide them with a $250 gift card so they can just go get a meal, a hotel room, you know, whatever they need to do immediately following that incident. So they were issued a save card. And then on July 15th, we had another structure fire on Mendocino Street. Total of $100,000 worth of damage. Nobody was displaced except for the person. It was a, it was also accidental. A faulty gas stove that was in a detached garage that had been converted to a bedroom. So obviously, that bedroom and garage is no more, but they moved into the house. That is it for the incidents. Are there any questions on the report?
Just curious, when you say trash fire, I mean, is that something that is just, there was an accident or someone's going around setting fires?
No, it's probably accidental. It's probably accidental.
Just wondering.
Best guess? Cigarette? Somebody throws a cigarette into a trash can or throws a cigarette into a pile of trash that's next to a dumpster or something, or throws something hot. You know, we had, I don't know if it was on this one or in another area. We had a little trash fire that was started. It was in somewhere else. We had a trash fire that was started when somebody dumped their barbecue coals, and they weren't cooled. So that started a trash fire. So there's, there's a number of different ways that these little trash fires start.
Thank you.
No, I was just thinking that July was the hottest July on record, and if that's possibly...
Possibly.
Yeah.
Possibly. The other announcement that I have is, and I have some of these in the back of the room, Zone Haven, or what I have been calling Zone Haven for the past year, which is now called Genesis Protect. It is an evacuation platform that the fire department, the sheriff's department, the Office of Emergency Management, we all use the same thing now. So we're all going to be on the same page. We've broken up Altadena, actually, all of our area. We've broken up Altadena into evacuation zones. This is mostly in the event of a wildland fire, although it can be used for all hazards. But initially, it's for wildland fires. And if we were to have to issue evacuation orders, we would issue them by zones. And what is good about this program is that the public will have access to this map. And on the handout, there is a website. It's protect.genesis.com, and Genesis is spelled G-E-N-A-S-Y-S, but it's on the handout. If you were to go onto that website today, you will not see those zones. They've not been published yet, but they should be published by the end of the week. So just keep going back to the website, and you will see these Altadena zones. We want everybody in the community to learn what zone they live in. There is an app that you can download for your phone, iPhone or Android. It is called Genesis Protect. So you download that app as soon as we populate it and go live with the zones. And then you can follow the zone that you live in. And if you follow that zone, then wherever you are, if the status of that zone changes, your phone will give you an alert. It will not tell you what the change was. It'll just say, the status has changed. You open up the app, you find your zone, you see what the status is and whatever messages there are there. So the zones will always be color-coded. If they're gray or no shading at all, everything is normal, no emergency's happening. If a zone gets colored in blue, then that's an advisory has been issued. And what we might do with that is we might put a zone into an advisory status to alert the community. There is a brush fire burning in, you know, this area. But there is no threat to that zone at this time. And there are no evacuations being ordered, no warnings, no nothing. It's just to kind of let you know that we know that there's a fire and we're working on it. If a zone is colored in yellow, then that means that we have issued an evacuation warning for that zone. So if you need extra time to evacuate, if you have large animals, elderly, anybody who needs, you know, assistance in evacuating, that is the time to go. To me, that's the time for everybody to go, but... And then if the zone is colored in red, then an evacuation order has been issued. So hopefully, all this happens seamlessly, fingers crossed. When we do change the status of a zone, there will be additional information. When you look on the, on the website, there will be additional information. We may be able to tell you what roads have already been closed so you can avoid those intersections. We might be able to give you your possible evacuation route to get out of the area quickly. We can tell you, here is a temporary evacuation point to go to for more information, or here's where we've set up a shelter. So all of that information will be available to you. So again, these handouts are on the back table. Deb, if you want to take, there's a lot of them. If you want to take a stack for some of your volunteers. So one of the most important things to remember about this is, is this, this was done, this was a product that was the result of the Woolsey Fire. One of the lessons learned from the Woolsey Fire. And so OEM worked, and they found this vendor, and we created all these evacuation zones. The most important thing that this does is it puts everybody on the same page, looking at the same map. And at the time of the incident, we don't have to be guessing north of, south of, east of, west of. We can identify a zone, and that's already pre-populated what the north of, south of, east of, west of is. We have the ability, like you can see Chaney here is a very large zone. Most of it is in the forest, and that's why it's such a large zone. But if we wanted to determine that we only need to evacuate the southern part of this zone or the northern part of this zone, we can do a temporary split of the zone so that not everybody is impacted. And that will show up on your, on your computer, on your phone, and then it would be labeled Chaney A and Chaney B until we put it back together again. So one, one half of the zone might be under an evacuation order while the other half is under a warning. But it'll be pretty clear. None of this changes the way fire and sheriff do business. We do exactly what we've always done. The only thing that it has done is it's put us all on the same maps, and it's allowed us to share those maps with the public. So that's, those are really the pluses that come out of it. But it doesn't change the way we respond to incidents. Any questions?
Any questions? Any more questions? Okay, go ahead. Connor, go ahead.
It's actually not a question, but I just wanted to commend you guys and say thank you for the Millard response, for your part in it. It was amazing to see how many helicopters were flying over. I mean, it was really impressive and gave us all a lot of confidence. And a lot of people were texting me saying that, so I want you guys to know that.
Thank you. I will pass that along.
And thank you for tagging on to Connor. Your quick response back to us to also fill us in also helped us get the information out there too. So that was really awesome.
And just so you know, Dorothy did ask me the question, why was it called the Millard Incident? When it was, when it was somewhere else. And to answer, so you know, especially when the, when these fires happen in the forest, it is Angeles National Forest who names the incidents. We have to go, sometimes we name them because we're the first there, but they'll change the name because they get to, they get to name the incident.
Do you think there'll be any webinars or ways for the public to understand the GIS mapping?
I would like to put together a community meeting here with your help. And, you know, promote it on the website. We'll promote it on our social media. But I would like to do that maybe within the next three weeks or so. Just set aside a couple of hours, one evening at night, bring the community in, and go through this and explain everything about how, how this works. And really, and get everybody who comes to encourage their neighbors now to, it's basically, it's going to be a Know Your Zone campaign.
Awesome. And then you did August 17th, that's Thursday, right?
Oh, the Firewise?
Yeah.
Yeah, this Thursday, there is a, I almost forgot about it, but it is on my calendar. I will be attending it. We are joining with Ventura County Fire Department, and it is in Camarillo. It is a seminar of sorts for communities. I did put it out to the town council and to all of my town councils, if they were interested in attending, to learn how to become a Firewise community and be registered as a Firewise community. And one of the biggest advantages of doing that, or it's possible that we can section off certain areas of Altadena, basically the ones that are most prone to wildfires, and I'm thinking the Meadows, and, you know, make them a Firewise community. It does involve community, the stakeholders in that community, playing with us and doing their due diligence and all of that. But different projects that they do and submit to the Firewise community and become an official community can result, it's not a guarantee, but it can result in a discount on insurance premiums.
Yeah, thank you. I know we have a couple of those, you know, the Meadows with Chaney Trail. But, you know, back to Hawaii, the public really needed to know what to do, and they didn't know what to do. So the Firewise Council is really important.
That's a tough one. What happened in Hawaii is, that's, that's a very tough one. It's, um... They were a little bit more strapped for resources than we will ever be. The conditions were a lot different than what we would have. And there, there was a point in that fire where that fire was moving a mile a minute. And there's nothing that can get in front of that. I mean, when you have a fire that's moving one mile per minute, that's devastating.
Well, thank you for all the great work keeping us safe here. Let's just keep getting safer. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think that's, that's it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, and if you want to set that meeting up, just contact me. I'll, I'll help you. Okay? All right, okay. Now we move on to 3.4 CERT. We have our own Deb Haberstadt.
Maria, before you go, the Meadows has a very active and has for years, ever since the station fire, a FireSafe Council. So, I mean, that'd be a place to start for everybody.
We've got to get them to be a Firewise community.
Right, I understand. Okay.
Right away there.
Okay. Hi, everybody. On this piece of paper, I have an extraordinarily long and annoying web link for giving money to the Red Cross for Maui only. So I brought it, but anybody who wants it, just email me, halfcityprodz@gmail.com, and I will send it to you. Meanwhile, I'm going to pass it around so that, you know, if you want to take your phone and take a picture of it, you can do that.
Or if you send it to me, I can send it out to everybody, Deb, just email it.
Yeah, I could do that.
Okay.
Okay. That's the Red Cross link, yeah. And it's already in process. And there's all kinds of, I know at least, I know 12 people that are in the town to the south of, of where it was burned down, that were, that are there from the Red Cross. And they went right away. So that's only 12 that I know from territory too. There's a lot of help there. It's just, it's so hard. There's no way to get in and out. That's the main problem. Anyway, I'm Deb. I'm the liaison for Altadena Community Emergency Response Group, known as its acronym CERT. Thank you for having me tonight. The Altadena CERT team meets the second Wednesday of every month, face-to-face here at the Altadena Community Center at 5:30. Wildfires in Hawaii, mostly, most notably Maui, are on all of our minds since we live in a wildfire probable zone. Last year, Altadena property owners hired goat herders to chomp down the grass. LA County now requires herders for the goats. The Meadows FireSafe Council cut down the grasses on the wilderness side of their neighborhood as they have done at least since the station fire. I took pictures of them. I know they were there. If it happens here, we're close, we're so close to the station fire and bobcat fires, we may not have Wi-Fi or cellphone alerts. Maui shows at the danger of relying solely on internet connections, cellphone towers, and the power grid. These are, just the same thing in earthquakes. My advice would be to Altadenaans to listen to your sheriff's department and to your county fire. If they say go, go. But use your sense. If you need to go before they say go, go anyway, okay? Leave. You need to not minimize the possibility of wildfire, but to prepare. Buy and learn how to use... Buy and learn how to use the FRS or family little radios. Take a ham radio class and join our Altadena Local Emergency Radio Team or Alert. Contact Nancy Darling. I have her email if you like it. Manage the grasslands and grasses around your home. Harden and prepare your properties to fire. Read LA County's fire on their website, or LA County Fire, sorry, Red Set, Ready, Set, Go brochure. If you suspect a fire coming towards your house, especially if we are having one of our high wind events, leave, get out of the way. Practice all possible evacuation routes away from our mountains from your home. And thank you, Maria, for doing such a wonderful job with, with that. We have a new, a new tool. Red Cross donations link, I'm sending it around to you. And if you can't read it, just email me again and I'll send it to you. Upcoming CERT, face to face trainings for the end of this year will take place in Sierra Madre the end of, uh, in, in September, from September 16th through the 23rd. I'll be helping to teach Sierra Madre. And probably Crescent Valley CERT for the week will be November 11th through the 18th. Paul Nuttman needs to confirm these dates with me. Thanks, thanks, Reggie. All are welcome. If another date is needed, please contact Maria Greiken to ask for LA County CERT training dates. Our emergency CERT mapping project for use in an EOC hour, our Altadena CERT mapping project, to be used in an EOC, reporting to the ATC and for presentations is underway. It presumes, it presumes a worst case scenario of no power, no calls and no internet. There will also be a digital form for when we, when we do have power. The project's been approved by our LASD captain Jabari Williams. I need to ask the IRS to assign our taxpayer ID number so that I can open a bank account at Pasadena Federal Credit Union under the name of Altadena CERT to put our money that we raised for the project. Currently, the cost will be more than $500 and less than $1,000. We will likely use a GoFundMe page to solicit the needed funds. Retired museum display Altadena artist Barry Penn has designed the project and it's underway. Altadena's Local Emergency Radio Team Alert has placed Altadena CERT on their website. Actually have a website. Yay. Thank you, Nancy Darling. In June, we discussed wildfire, reiterating, eliminating in our meetings. Eliminating fuel, being alert to the weather, humidity and wind, topography, and the importance of preparing our homes and neighborhood to avoid devastation. In July, Altadena CERT members discussed the need for blood, condition of water dams in California, SoCal gases, safety suggestions, especially before digging. We also attended a CV CERT event in Lockinada High School about disasters. Sheriff Luna and his staff attended and spoke at the event. In August, we talked about AI and ChatGPT, social media so-called experts, and also how it might affect information for CERT. We discussed fundraiser ideas for a CERT mapping project and other equipment we might need. We talked about social awareness regarding China and Russia, recent, their recent aggressive postures. Remember, we live in LA. We did have World War II. My parents met here, so let's not be stupid about other countries wanting to have war, okay? As mentioned, I am looking for someone to take my place as leader of Altadena CERT. I'll be happy to train that person for a year before giving up the reins. Any questions?
Well, any questions? Oh, Diane?
Well, I just had a quick comment, which was I did hear in Maui that a lot of the people didn't have gasoline to get out. And I know you guys teach for CERT, right? Because once electricity goes, you can't pump gas. And I know for CERT you teach, or the county does, never let your gas tank get below half tank. So that you have money, you have gas to get out if you need to get out. So when I heard that, I thought, oh geez, that was really bad that they couldn't, couldn't drive their cars, some of them.
Thank you for reminding us and mentioning that. That's exactly right. Yeah, worry when your tank's at half. Anybody else?
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you, Deb. Okay.
Veronica, I'm sorry. I saw Maria come back in because she, she left for a minute, so I was going to ask. Sorry.
Radio silence.
Okay, so as soon, as soon as we set a community meeting for this, it will also include the radio giveaway. So I will make sure I've got the emails of everybody who's already registered. I'll push out again to have new people register to get a radio. And again, the registering to get a radio, the main purpose of that is so that I know how many radios to bring with me. I don't want to, I always bring extra because there's always some people who didn't register. But if I have no idea, then I have no idea, you know, where to start. So I like for people to register. But I'll work with you, Dorothy, so you can get that posted. And we'll start getting more registrations. I'll email out everybody who's in the database who hasn't picked up a radio yet. So they will know when they can come and get it. But yeah, we'll take care of the radios as well.
Chair, before you move on, I just wanted to remind anyone that wants to make public comment to not forget to pull out a public comment card. I have two, one for Nancy Robb and one for Nelson Morales. So if there's anybody else, the comment cards are in the back.
Okay, we're going to move right on to our special presentation. And we have Captain Williams. He's going to talk about street vendors. We had a meeting before this meeting, so he's going to give us an update.
So just want to talk a little bit about street vendors, illegal vendors, food vendors, number of names for them. So just, just to make the public aware. Of course, anybody that sets up a business on public, public grounds, without a permit, it's actual illegal. So we, throughout the whole county, we have this issue of illegal food vendors setting up and selling different foods, sometimes different items. And if there's no permit, especially when it comes to food, it becomes an issue. I want to say back in 2019, a Senate bill was established, Senate Bill 946, that made the enforcement of going after food vendors a little bit more challenging. So until the, the county has established a set law, the sheriff's department is kind of restricted on how we can enforce it. Now, this is a big issue here in Altadena because it's affecting little businesses, certain businesses, especially when it comes to food. We've had a number of meetings and we had one today. And it's going to be a collaborative effort with the town council, public health and the sheriff's department. However, we need the public involved also. So just a few strategies on what you can do or what we can do when it comes to illegal food vendors, especially when it comes to sheriff's department enforcement. If they're on your private property and you ask them to leave and they refuse to do so, they are trespassing. So if that becomes the issue, there's a few things that you need to do so that the sheriff's department can come out and do some enforcement. We have on, at the station, what we call a 602 letter. It is a letter that's saying that you have established that no one can be trespassing on that property. We need that letter on file. That way, the sheriff's department can go out and enforce it when, when you call. It, it helps a lot if you have signs posted before we come out and do so. There's certain things that we could certainly enforce and that's loud noises, you know, people blocking the sidewalks, things of that nature. So it's important that people call the station to report these issues. If they're, have a generator that's making too much noise during a certain period of time, and that's usually between nine and seven, 9:00 PM and seven in the morning, there is a county ordinance that the sheriff's department can enforce. There is a policy that we have, we have to come out and give them a warning. And after that second warning, we can come out and do a little bit more aggressive enforcement. But we won't know about it unless people call. Also, if they're blocking sidewalks, you have to have that walkway, public walkway accessible for people to pass by. If people are noticing that, that's something that they can call out and that's something we can enforce. Another issue that we have are when people coming to buy some of this stuff, they're double parking or parking illegally. It helps if you can call and we'll come out as fast as we can. If they, if they're gone by the time we get there, at least we have it on record, you know? So that's something that we encourage the public to call for. And I think this is the main thing. I just want to warn the public, just try to refrain from patronizing these businesses. There is a permit process with the county and they have to follow certain rules. And there's a reason why people aren't getting these permits. I have so many stories that I can tell that I've seen firsthand. And a lot of these places are not, uh, not safe to eat. The sanitary conditions are horrible, for lack of a better term. So if you see, you know, one of these businesses, the best thing you can do is, is to not patronize that business. That, that's the best way to get that business away from, out of this area. There are a lot of businesses out there that have gone through the proper channels and went through hoops and all kinds of stuff just to be able to have a legit business. And they're suffering because of some of these illegal vendors. So keep that in mind. Other than that, that's, that's all I have to present on, unless there's any more questions. Again, it is a collaborative effort. The Health Department, the Town Council, the Board of Supervisors and the Sheriff's Department. We are restricted on how we can enforce, the Sheriff's Department, on how the Sheriff's Department can enforce the vendors. But like I was talking about some of those issues, those are the ones we can come out and do something about.
Any questions? Um, Suzie, can I have you come up and tell us about the upcoming meeting and what the supervisors? No? Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Oh, all right. Okay, all right, okay. Because the supervisor is working on something to help us with the illegal vendors. So, okay, I was moving ahead of myself. Okay. All right. Anything else? Thank you, Captain.
You're welcome.
Okay, sorry. Okay. Let's move on to community reports now. We have Parks and Rec, Guillermo Portillo.
Hi, everybody. Just wanted to give you guys a quick reminder about Parks at the Dark. Unfortunately, it's already completed, so it actually finished on the first week of August. We had a great turnout. We actually had about 11,000 people in overall attendance. So that's including all of our activities every Thursday, Friday and Saturday for the eight weeks that we had it, all right? And then also, a friendly reminder, we do have our farmer's market and on every Friday from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. A bonus with that is actually we're giving funds from the, so hold this. Sorry, for Catherine Barger's office. And they're actually going to be funding on the last Friday of every month, a concert, actually at the farmer's market. So expect a concert every last Friday. And then another update, we actually are going to be having a community meeting ourselves. So I want to invite all of you guys to actually come out. So at Loma Alta Park, it's going to take place on September 7th from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And then again, we're going to have another one at Farnsworth Park. And that one's going to be on September 13th from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. It's a good way to invite everyone to the park to actually kind of get to know a little bit about the staff and some of the upcoming, upcoming events and programs that we have available. And then just to kind of give everyone a little bit of a update with the swimming pool, it's been a bit confusing with their department, but they actually updated their hours. They're only going to be available up until next week. So on the 26th is going to be their last day. But their hours for the free swim is actually from 4:00 PM to 6:45 PM from Tuesdays, Thursdays and Saturdays. So I left a couple of flyers back there in case anybody's interested. So you can kind of get the hours on there. And then sports, we have upcoming. So our new season's going to be with soccer, cheerleading, and then also lacrosse. So again, I put flyers out there if you guys are interested. A new program we actually are going to be partnered up with is with Galactic Sports, was actually sponsored by the Gasol Foundation, which some of you guys know Paul Gasol. They're actually going to be doing a free clinic for everybody. It's going to be taking place on Wednesdays from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. That one, I also left a flyer for you guys. And that's actually going to begin on October, all the way to the end of November. Also, another reminder is we are going to be closed for the gym for the, all of the month of September. They're going to be resurfacing the floor so they can do some maintenance. That's why we're actually going to be starting October for the basketball. And then last thing, just a friendly reminder also with the Rotary Club, they are hosting our concerts. The next one they're going to be having is actually Las Chicas. So that's going to be a salsa band. It's all female group. It's actually pretty diverse. But other than that, that's all I have for you guys.
Okay. Any questions?
Oh, Madam Chair. Just real quick, I asked last week about leveling those diamonds up at Farnsworth Park. Did you remember to do that?
Yeah, they actually had leveled it.
When?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, you wanted to check because I, we had submitted the work order. The next day, within two, three days, they actually completed it.
When, when did they do that?
Literally within three days.
Okay, cool. I'll go back up and look.
Yeah, don't check.
With the ending of free swim, is that the end of water polo as well?
Yes.
Yes, all programs?
All programs.
Okay.
Anything else? No? Okay. We're good. Thank you, thank you. It was an amazing summer. Thank you. We're going to move right on to our library, Nikki Winslow.
Okay. All right, good evening. Thank you, as usual, for the time to update all of you and the community on the many, many things going on at your Altadena libraries. Real quickly, just a reminder that we will be closed on Monday, September 4th for Labor Day, both libraries. So moving on to building projects, they continue to move forward. With our new LA County Planner assigned a few months ago, the conditional use permit is being processed, hooray. And our capital project manager is hopeful we will have it by the end of October. So please cross all your fingers and toes for me. At the same time, we're also submitting for other county department reviews, such as building and safety concurrently in hopes of having those plans approved by the time we get the permit. So if all goes according to plan, we're really hoping that early 2024 we'll start the Bob Lucas Project. I have been in touch with Diane in hopes to bring this to Land Use Committee and potentially the full Town Council in September. So more info to come, but that's good news. So summer reading is already over, which is crazy. And it was a roaring success this year. We set our community minute reading goal at 250,000 minutes and exceeded that by over 31,000 minutes. We also saw a 35% increase in registrations, 41% more active readers, 113% increase in individual challenge completions, and an 80% increase in adult signups. So honestly, it was like an absolute success. And I'm happy to say the registered teens had the highest reading challenge completion rate by any age group. So all age groups were super active. In addition to that, we had 148 summer reading library programs and outreach events that more than 4,000 people attended. So that's a 43% increase over the number of programs last year. And honestly, I don't know how the staff got all of those programs put on. So I just want to thank the staff and the volunteers and of course, the community for all of your support. Every single program that we have is so well-attended. So thank you. So hooray. Our next Friends of the Altadena Libraries book sale is coming up on Saturday, September 23rd. That'll be from 10:00 to 4:00. The first hour will be for members only, as a reminder. It's only $10 to join. And then from 11:00 to 4:00, we'll be open to the public. Parking will be limited because it's, as usual, held in the parking lot. In terms of Altadena Poets Laureate, the poets are in their second year. I am really happy to share that they applied for a fellowship through the Academy of American Poets and were awarded that, which was a $50,000 fellowship. Poets and were awarded that, which was a $50,000 fellowship, most of which is to compensate them for their time. A lot of poets don't get compensation. So I do want to emphasize, and it's the next slide, Dorothy, sorry, that we're having their kickoff event on Wednesday, August 30th, at 6:00 o'clock at the main library. It's an after-hours event. They're also going to be offering at least monthly programs through April of next year. They ran a really amazing program last year, so I highly encourage everyone to attend. And I did bring flyers for the kickoff event in the back of the room. So we continue to rotate in local artists. In September and October, we have a group show with several different artists, as well as a collage exhibition out in the library curated by one of those artists. The reception to celebrate that is going to be Saturday, September 16th, from 1:30 to 3:30 in the main library community room. So come check out some of our local artists. Couple programs of note I wanted to mention, the very popular Shred Day is coming this Friday. If you have documents to shred, I highly recommend getting there early because as soon as the truck is full, they leave. So it starts at 9:00. Definitely get in line and bring all of your documents you'd like to shred. Friday, we also have Wellby Health coming to check your blood pressure from 10:30 to 12 at the main library. And then on Saturday, we're doing a blood drive in coordination with Huntington Health. You can call or text to schedule appointment, and that's from 9:00 to 3:15. In addition to that, the very popular Repair Cafe is back this coming Saturday, the 19th. A little birdie told me that Assembly Member Chris Holden is going to be there when it starts at 10:00 o'clock and will make remarks, so come visit. It'll be out in the parking lot, and it's been back one other time and it was very, very popular. So if you have something you'd like to see repaired, it can be clothing, electronics, all kinds of different stuff, please come by. And then on Saturday, we also have our third of our liberating words writing workshop with Lorinda Hawkins, that you do need to register for, and that'll be from 1:30 to 3:00. So I am sad to say that Saturday, September 2nd, is going to be our last seed library for the foreseeable future. From what I understand, that partnership with Slola has ended, so this will be the last one for now until they come back with the next round of seed library. But this one on Saturday, September 2nd, will be an amazing roundtable discussion with some UC master gardeners, so come join the conversation. All right. And just really quickly, our Youth and Family Services Manager, Sophia Araya, started a Moms Consciousness Raising Group that she's going to offer monthly. I believe the first one was this past Monday, so if you know moms that want to connect, and it's no kids allowed, it's just moms, to come together, please spread the word. That'll be next on September 11th from 6:00 to 7:30. We're also bringing Amy Rutledge, who's been offering meditation virtually for us for the past three years, basically. This is going to be in-person at the Bob Lucas Library Tuesday, September 12th, and that'll be gratitude meditation and sound bath, and she's amazing. So if you are interested, please join us. There's also going to be a mosaic workshop with Ellen Dinerman on Thursday, September 14th, from 3:00 to 5:00 at the main library. And if you haven't attended, a FabLab program, which is also known as like our Makerspace at the library, they offer some amazing programs. This one on September 16th is to do a cover design for banned books. I believe this is going to be held during Banned Books Week in September. Registration required, so I'd highly recommend you sign up and check it out. And Guillermo also promoted it, but we're also sponsoring Rotary concerts as well. There's three more to go. Very fun, and come see the library staff that are there. There's three more to go. So I think that's it, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move on to our committee reports, and we have 6.1 Land Use, Diane Markison.
Attacked by a chair. Okay. The Land Use Committee met two weeks ago. The Land Use Committee met two weeks ago and had three presentations for different businesses that are requesting alcohol CPs. One is Eversen Royce, located at 2311 Lincoln Boulevard, and, Lincoln Avenue, sorry. And there's another one that's called Bar, I'm sorry, 2311 Bar at 2311 Lincoln, which is one building split in two, that will have two different kinds of businesses in it. And the other one is Nancy's Greek Cafe. We will probably be voting on this at the Land Use Meeting, which I think is September 1st, no, September 5th. And so if anybody's interested in coming, making public comment, we can do that. The other thing is that Altadena Heritage, you all may or may not know that Mountain View Cemetery, about Mountain View Cemetery, did you know that the oldest business in Altadena is Mountain View Cemetery and Mausoleum? The cemetery was established before Altadena existed in 1882 by the Giddings family of abolitionists. Pasadena didn't want a burial ground within its limits, so Levi Giddings, who arrived in our foothills from the Midwest around 1875, as a farmer and rancher, used part of his land for a cemetery built in the garden style. A small mausoleum was later added, and in 1923, 1923, 100 years ago, what is now called Mountain View Mausoleum was built. It was the most expensive mausoleum built to date in America. A huge place in the Lombard Romanesque style with a hint of Spanish. Tiffany-stained glass, a ceiling inspired by the Sistine Chapel, with overall exceptionally fine craftsmanship and architectural design. It was the jewel in the crown of its creator, Altadena and Cecil Bryant, who built more than 80 mausoleums around the country. Altadena Heritage is throwing a 100th birthday party for this architectural gem with a band playing 1920s music, a dance demonstration, famous Altadinas, including Cecil Bryant, brought back to life by reenactors. Okay. Tours and art. There will be a student art contest and invitational exhibition by noted local painters, both with the theme "My Favorite Mountain View." Get it? Guests are invited to get into the spirit by, you won't see me this way, dawning 1920s attire if they feel like it. Get tickets at altadenaheritage.org. This event is also being sponsored by our supervisor, Catherine Barger, and the Owen Brown Site Gravesite Committee, which we have, are part of. It came through the Land Use Committee and the Town Council, Owen Brown Gravesite Committee. We all want to thank Mountain View for its years of being a cultural resource to our community, also always saying yes, always saying, sorry, always saying yes when asked to host various events unrelated to its core business. It is still owned and operated by descendants of Levi Giddings. The mausoleum's birthday bash is a great opportunity to visit this exquisite building for a happy occasion and experience in Altadena in the 1920s. Sponsorship opportunities still exist if your organization, Doug, would like to get involved in this event. And again, contact, just kidding, contact is altadenaheritage@gmail.com. And if you're a member of Altadena Heritage, it's $20, otherwise it's 25, which is, and it's going to be a really fun event. And if you have not been to the mausoleum, I know it's kind of creepy, it is the most unbelievably, it's like a big museum that everybody should go to. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you for that. Okay, the next is our election, 6.2, and I am going to be the election chair this year. This will be my last year on the Town Council, so I volunteer to do the election. Our election will be held on Tuesday, November 7th. That'll be our early voting, and then we will have our regular voting on November, Saturday, November 11th. The application deadline, and we hope we get lots of applicants, will be October 6th. And I hope those that are on the Town Council, put in their applications early, that the ones that are up for reelection, if you could do it early, it really helps a lot, not wait till the last to do it. Okay? Oh.
I know, I'm going, don't look at me. I'm not running.
Okay, so those are the important dates, and there'll be more upcoming in the next upcoming meeting. So all those interested, please get your applications in by October 6th. Okay. Like I told you in the beginning, we are important and we do have power. Okay? All right. So thank you. That's my report for the election committee.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Please. Are the, where are the applications? Is the information on the website yet?
No, it's not on the website yet, but it will be before the end of the week. We'll get all that done.
Thank you.
Yes, we will have all that ready for everybody. Okay. Any other questions? No? Okay. And I will be seeking an election committee, too. So I will be reaching out. Okay. We'll move on to our Communications Committee, Nick Arzon.
Thank you, Chair. Communication Committee continues work on a number of ongoing projects and new ones. I just wanted to highlight one of those new ones real briefly. We've just begun our unhoused initiative. This is all in the framework of communication. While the committee members are still shaping what that will look like and what we hope to achieve, it will be about communicating with the community what local services are available, a sort of campaign, getting news out there about how to deal with. But mostly, we're just going, county has something very much like this already. They have a card that they can put out there, but we want to kind of regionalize it, make it specific to Altadena and just over our borders. Many in the community are already working hard on this issue, and we want to highlight those efforts as well and do what we can to better inform the community. I just also want to quick mention that we've talked about schools starting for the parents and students out there. The Altadena Town Council does have an internship program. We had one year as a pilot, and this past year, we had our first year. It was very successful. It's great using these students and giving them their service hours, and they can directly help their community. That's not necessarily just with the council. We connect them with local nonprofits. So please keep spreading the word. We're happy to put them to work. And I have to say, the kids that show up are amazing. We've been very lucky. This year, the program will always be supervised by myself, and our wonderful resident volunteer is Isis Molden. And the change this year, it's going to be student-led, so while we'll be supervising the students themselves, we'll sort of form a team to do intake, outreach, and placement. So fellow council members, if you need help with any of, especially on committees, if you need help with projects, let me know. I'll make sure that Sky Corey, who is our high school leader, will know to send them your way. If anybody has interest in helping with the unhoused initiative, the internship program, or any of the programs, we've got them listed on our website, please reach out to me directly for more info. And my email can be found on the ATC website. For those listening, it's nick.arzon@altedinatowncouncil.org. That goes for any of the council members. It's our name with a period between. As always, the Communication Committee never moves forward on projects and tasks, including this initiative and everything I mentioned tonight, without the input of this awesome council. And lastly, it's not really Communication Committee, but I do want to make sure that people know there's an Akona meeting coming up in September. It'll be after our next meeting, I'll give more details, but the two main subjects are the SCE upgrade that was happening in the Meadows. But we also want to make sure people kind of tune in because it's not just about what's going on there, but what happened there and how that might apply to the rest of our community. And also, on water usage and storage during fire season, we have the Foothill Municipal Water District coming. That's it. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we move right along to 6.4 Safe Streets Committee. Councilmember Wong.
Thank you, Chair Jones. The Altadena Town Council Traffic Safety and Mobility Committee, also known as Safe Streets Committee, meets on the fourth Thursday of each month via Zoom. Join the next meeting, Thursday, August 24th at 7:00 p.m. You can RSVP off of our altedinatowncouncil.org committee page for Safe Streets, and hope you can get involved. Some of the work that's been going on has actually resulted from a lot of community work doing walk audits. Walk audits are a great way to take something in our community that someone has a complaint about or a concern about, and then we walk, and then we walk with the Traffic Safety and Mobility Department of Public Works, council members if they want to come and join. So ultimately, that's led to some really great work, sadly, when we had our neighbors lose their lives crossing the street almost a year ago, in November and December. So we definitely want to remember them this year for World Day of Remembrance. But in the meantime, we've had unprecedented traffic safety measures, thanks to the great work of council members themselves, getting proactive in their area, and also just amazing collaboration that continues to grow with the county Public Works. So Tuesday's meeting, August 8th, was the traffic regulation items on the Board of Supervisors' agenda, and I think there were 12 different items focusing specifically on getting traffic regulations in order to do some traffic safety measures. So installed just this last Saturday is an always stop at Palm Street and Fair Oaks, and that is really going to be significant, I think, just seeing people being mindful at that four-way stop. So let's definitely work on that, as Councilmember Knapp said, being aware as all of the schools get back in action. So that was a great one. A couple other always stops is Sunset Ridge and Loma Alta, between the two parks, helping making it safer to access Loma Alta Park, and all of our parks are very important. And then Holliston and Altadena Drive will also look to be an always stop. So those are monumental changes. Lots of crosswalks will be finding their way onto our streets, showing that we actually have pedestrian travel here in Altadena, which sometimes we forget because we don't see it. So these are really amazing things. Reducing the speed limit on Cheney Trail from 35 to 25 will be that action from the border of Los Angeles County down to Loma Alta and other great actions. So I think there's one more, which is Woodbury and Santa Rosa. I think there's also going to be an all-way, oh, one-way, a westbound stop there, Woodbury, Santa Rosa. So lots of amazing work. Get involved. You can also simply go to the Public Works app, and there's actually a section on there if you want to just put that information in there, and Public Works will contact you. So that is really awesome. And then through the committee, we've also, since the very beginning, focused on safe routes to schools, as one of our first projects at Jackson Elementary. And so we're really targeting, again, Walk to School Day in October, which is October 4th, in partnership with the library. And everybody else, this is the time to get involved and be part of, part of the action, the movement. So we're really looking to activate more schools to actually walk to school from different hubs. And so Loma Alta Park on September 9th, in partnership, as hopefully, as we've been sort of aligning more with our new market, the neighborhood market, and the community garden, and anybody else that wants to get involved. We're also going to be looking to do a mobility demonstration, looking at different things called parklets, curb extensions that are just demonstrations, so the community can see what those look like, so we can work on more changes and safety measures. Thank you.
Any questions? Comments? Okay. Thank you for that. Okay. We're going to move on to seven, item seven, general public comment. Is there anybody else who has not turned in a public comment card? Now's the time to do it.
Ann, nothing from you.
Ann?
Ann, do you want, do you have any updates? No. Okay.
Okay, so we have two public comments tonight. We've got Nancy Robb, and we've got Nelson Morales. So Nancy, you want to come up first, and then you've got two minutes, three minutes, two minutes. Two minutes.
Okay, so we have two public comments tonight. We've got Nancy Robb, and we've got Nelson Morales. So Nancy, you want to come up first, and then you've got two minutes, three minutes, two minutes.
Hi, my name's Nancy Robb, and I'm an Altadena resident by birth, born in Altadena Community Hospital. And I don't know if you're aware, but in 1949, three Altadena residents started your local rock club, the Pasadena Lapidary Society. We currently have over 100 members in our society. We have, I think, 20 youth, young rockhounds, and we're having a show on the 27th and 28th of this month, so coming up in 10 days, and it's being held at the Masonic Temple in Arcadia right across from the library. So if you like rocks, gems, minerals, it's kind of the thing nowadays, if you want to learn how to do silversmithing, making jewelry, it's really quite fun. It's free. We have a kitchen with great chili and other things that you can buy, so you can come and spend the whole day there. I'm in charge of the children's area. We're doing egg carton collections where we have over 150 different specimens for the children to purchase, anywhere from 50 cents to a dollar, and the specimens are worth a lot more than that. But we want to really raise their interest, and they come along with little labels as to some scientific facts or where the items were found. They also get free rocks. We have demonstrators for adults. We have 17 vendors that are selling rock-related items, anything from scientific to spiritual. A lot of people believe that there are different properties and gems and minerals. I happen to have rocks all over my house, so anyways, in back are the flyers, there's a QR code, take some tumbled stones, and it's a lot of fun if you want to join our club. Unfortunately, we meet same time as you. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Okay, Nelson?
Good evening. My name's Nelson Morales. I'm here representing El Patron, the restaurant right across the street over here. The issues with the street vendors, I just wanted to make everybody aware, the impact that it has on restaurants. For El Patron itself, we've noticed a 30% decrease in attendance and revenue, just because of the street vendors coming in. So it's a bigger issue. Some people don't think much of it, oh, they're just selling tacos, or they're selling their thing and leave it alone. It does impact the businesses that have to go through, jump through a lot of hoops, pay insurance, have a lot of permits and all that, that cost money, that these vendors don't have to do, right? You see the picture right there on the wall of the restaurant, it's, I believe it's always been a restaurant, and we want to stay open, but a 30% decrease is, it hurts. So just want to make everybody aware of that. When you see the vendors help out, maybe go to a restaurant, you know, or something like that. That's all I have. I didn't want to take two minutes, but I just want to do, I wanted to raise awareness of the actual financial impact that these vendors are having on us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nelson.
Okay, I just want to add on to that. I had a conversation with the owner of Moda's on Lincoln, and he was really upset. He said he cannot afford to sell a taco for $1.25 because he has to pay for license, insurance, he has to pay his mortgage, and he said that it's really a shame that the vendors are allowed to be out there on the street when he has to jump through so many hoops. And he's been there over 20 years, and he says that. And another thing he brought up is that the trash and the things that they dump into the ground causes the rodents at night to come out, and during the daytime, the crows are out. So it is a problem. It's not just a small business trying to, you know, work and get ahead. It's a, it's a hit to our businesses here that are following the rules. So the one thing we can do is not patronize them and not buy those $1.25 tacos. Go to El Patron and order, okay? All right, so I just wanted to say that. Okay, we're going to move on to Census Track reports, and we have one, and that is in 4601.
Yep, on behalf of 4601, just to let the community know that the Altadena Drive resurfacing project that was postponed for some unforeseen reasons last month has been rescheduled, and it's going to take place between August 24th and September 8th. The resurfacing of Canyon Crest Road has already been completed and is pending the restoration of the pavement markings by the Public Works crew, and they anticipate that that work's going to be fully completed in the, fully completed in the next few weeks. And so what we're looking forward to is the, is Altadena Drive from Allen to Canyon Crest, Canyon Close Road. Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
Can I move to adjourn?
Let's just stay a little longer. No.
Before we, before we fully adjourn, before we fully adjourn, I do just want to say that we have a new business that's going to be opening in Altadena. It's called Prime Pizza. They delivered four pizzas here tonight. They are in the conference room next door in this building, but across the hall. They're very large pizzas. There's cheese pizza and pepperoni. I cannot take four large pizzas home, so please help yourself to pizza before you leave, and look forward to them opening the end of next week or the week after.
Okay, and I, we have a new neighbor here, so I want to welcome. Can you just introduce yourself? He just came to see who we were.
Yeah, I'm Castle. My wife and I moved in here about a year ago. I wanted to come here to get more calls, so I just wanted to end up.
Good.
Our elections are coming up, so you might want to consider a seat.
West Palm, who's, who is that?
Okay, so now can we have that motion?
We did.
What, what?
I, I.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, moved, second, everybody's in favor. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you for our new mics, Pasadena Media.
Yeah, yeah.